What's going on?
Well, you helped her, Mike. I knew you would. I forgot to tell her you were in there meeting. I knew you should have known.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else?
Yes, I will. In a couple of weeks, I'm literally starting to do outline two new ones. Going to Wales, Scotland. Wales and Ireland. Oh, my God.
They're going overseas to take.
Are you sticking around?
A little personal writing.
That's when the, um, thing is over.
It'll be a while.
We're live right now.
Awesome. Okay.
Was there anyone else out there? I was kind of expecting a gentleman. I'm not sure. So. All right, a few people already standing. Why don't we begin with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everybody grab a seat. Do you have a man?
Yeah, that's me. I'm on this side because I summoned you all here.
So, um.
Can I sit up there without being in trouble?
Go right.
Yeah, I can.
So to be, so to begin, um, the mayor, James Galliano, and Lori Paleyoda, trustee Lori Paleyoda, um, could not make it tonight as they are attending the.
School board.
Forum.
Forum, correct.
So, um, we have pretty much a short agenda, but a couple of items upfront to begin with. And, um, they deal with accepting the resignation of, uh, the planning board chair, Maureen Spalding, and then appointing, um, Lieutenant General retired Grisoli as the planning board chair. So to accomplish that, the first thing I'm going to do is I'm going to make a motion to go into a special meeting to, um, address the resignation of Maureen Spalding and the appointment, um, as the, uh, um, the appointment, um, for the chair of the planning board. So I make that motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so. I'm used to writing this down, seven oh two. Okay. Okay, so, um, with respect to Maureen Spalding. So Maureen has served as the planning board chair for about five years. Um, not sure the total amount of time she's put on, but it, I think it might be close to eight to 10 years on the, on the planning board. But, um, Maureen advised us, um, a while back that she wanted to step down. And, um, we were waiting to, um, replace her, and we have an excellent replacement. But, uh, with respect to that Maureen, as I said, Maureen served as a chair, um, both on the board and as the chair. She was very capable. Um, she did excellent work, um, and we truly appreciate her longevity on the board and her commitment and dedication to the village. Um, Maureen is, what I would say is an example of a resident who, um, you know, dedicated to the village and is doing this, um, without any fanfare. Um, so that being said, let me just read off her, um, she sent an email regarding her resignation. She said, "Good morning. Please accept this email as an official correspondence indicating my decision to step down as the chair of the village, uh, Village of Cornwall and Hudson Planning Board." And, um, she said, "Per our discussion, she will continue through June 2024 until her replacement is available to begin." And she expressed that she had the honor to serve in this capacity over the past several years, and she wishes the best to her successor and to the village. Regards, Maureen Spalding. So I will make the motion to accept the resignation, uh, for Maureen Spalding as the chair of the planning board with regret. Um, can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Again, uh, Maureen, thank you for your commendable service and your leadership on the board throughout the past five years. Um, next up, we have, um, William Grisoli, who is retired lieutenant general. Um, he's graciously offered to be the chair of the village planning board to fill in the seat that obviously Maureen has just, uh, stepped down from. And if you remember, William was, um, along with Led Kloski, Mary Aspen, Dominic Cordisco, and Lorraine Guinness were, uh, they were all members of the village comprehensive plan committee. And they were instrumental in getting our comprehensive plan, um, completed and across the finish line. And, um, from what I remember during that tenure, it took like three years and it was like something like over 30 meetings. So he put his time in on that, and then he was also been, um, on the town planning board. I don't know when, since when.
A long time.
A long time, town one, okay. So he obviously has the experience, um, well-versed in this. And so he is agreeing to step down from that position and, uh, be appointed to our planning board as the chair. Um, and obviously clearly with his record, he'll be an excellent addition. So with that, I'll make a motion, uh, to appoint William Grisoli as the chair of the plan, of our village planning board. May I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Um, just what is the term? Uh, the chair is annually determined or is that? It's, um, well, I don't know. I'd have to go back.
He's gonna fill the remaining. I don't think she's up.
I can't, what I can't.
I have it, but I.
I can't, what I can't remember is, did we, in April, did we just hold her over? Or?
Oh, we did?
Yeah, pending the, yes.
Okay, so then she, right, so then, uh, then he'll be filling out, he'll be filling out the remainder of her term.
Not material to my.
Yeah, but no, good question, good question. So, um, I already said all in favor. Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Three oh, okay. So, um, we don't have any, any other items, um, that need to be, uh, we need to address a resolution with or vote on. So therefore I make the motion to, um, to end the special meeting. Um, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So special meeting's over at seven oh eight, okay. Moving on. Let's start with. All right, the treasurer. The treasurer's report, okay. Take a look, um, Doris, anything that you wanted to point out in regards to the treasurer's report?
Well, it's of interest in my class. You've already made $4,000. It's a good investment.
Oh, great, excellent, excellent, very good.
Times that we've been in it.
Very good.
And Megan is still doing, uh, training with Paula.
Okay. Very good. Well, you know what would be interesting is, so, let's just, AM 5:13. How long, how long have we had our money in its, um, Doris?
Three months.
Three months, yeah.
Okay, God, I wonder how much, I wonder how much we had, we would have made in the, in the other one. If you could figure it out.
One percent of the.
Yeah, yeah.
And, yeah.
I don't know what we had it at, at the old, at our other bank.
Like almost nothing.
Oh.
And the dollar amount.
Well, we still have an investment in there, right? It's about, what do we have, a third and, and nine, we could compare, I imagine.
That's what.
The Orange County Trust, is that what?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The Orange County Trust was almost nothing. The percentage was almost nothing.
So it's a bonus, it's a double bonus, all right.
And we can always increase the night class.
Yes. All right, let's see how this goes. So far, so good. All right, moving on, uh, the building report. Let's see, Manny, anything to point out, anything of significance?
Maybe not as big as we were last year, but I anticipate going forward, it's gonna pick up.
Yeah.
The inspection section should be picking up as well now that our new court enforcement officer will be pretty much on his own, uh, doing inspection at different times than I, so.
Okay.
Should pick up.
Oh, so, so Manny, you'll continue with your, uh, afternoon slash evening hours?
That is correct.
Good, good.
And Jimmy, what's the hours, Manny, that Jimmy's doing?
He's gonna, he's working my hours as much as possible that we can fit into his schedule because of the training purposes.
Hmm.
But, um, um, my plan is to then turn him loose come June 1st.
Okay.
I'm still gonna be, you know, overseeing him, but, uh, he'll be coming in during the day probably. Uh, better work out that schedule with his regular job.
Right, right.
Those hours during the day.
It's beyond just, when you have the, uh, searches, not searches, excuse me, the inspections. Is it, is he just doing the fire inspections or he's doing?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm keeping the fire inspection. He's gonna be doing inspection for building construction like, uh, roof, fans, solar panels, generators, those little ones that takes, uh, takes a long time for me to run them from place to place.
And you're sticking with the, the fire inspection?
There's no other big ones, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Just wondering, Manny, where do we stand on with the, uh, DB mark on the, um, where do they stand, I should say, on the, on the, uh, lighting, uh, problem that we had there?
They agreed to turn it off to further notice. They're gonna decide what to do, if they wanna move forward with it. I said they'll have to come get a building permit. At that time, I'll redo it more closely depending on what exactly they wanna do. And perhaps they have to go to the board, we don't know, but he has not turned it on since. And, uh.
Yeah, they were pretty, they were pretty cooperative on, they had the, the, um, pricing, you know, the, uh, the pricing sign that would let up. Not to injury, so he seemed pretty cooperative.
Little on the mountain beacon.
They have, we have had several issues. They, and I guess go there and talk to them and they, they, they respond.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay.
I just wonder where we were on that. Thank you.
Um, and any, no, I know you're working today, any issues, uh, with the filming down the street? No? Okay, very good. Okay, uh, moving on, so. Fire department. Rick, anything of note? Or Charlie?
Where's Charlie?
Same boat. Um, no.
Okay.
Nothing more than what's on there. We don't, I don't have the volunteer hours for trying to figure out to change some, something in the program again, so.
Got it.
Are all those false alarms, automatic alarms?
Yes.
So where do we?
Yeah, oh, go ahead, no, go ahead.
I just wanna know, uh, where we stand on the truck that was in the accident and all that. And, and what was the determination that we were cut off or is that true?
We were cut off.
Could you explain, Charlie?
Tell, tell, yeah, just describe this, where, where they were coming at.
Enter, exit.
Yeah.
I had a hard time figuring it out by sight.
Yeah.
The, the, our engine was coming from Route 32, um, toward the village.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, the car was coming off the, um, northbound exit ramp of 9W.
Okay, down the hill?
Yeah.
Down the hill to a stop sign?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
You know what, yeah?
The stop sign.
I, I travel that every day.
Car came out and stopped in our travel lane.
Kinda scary.
And then. I wasn't there, from what I understand, the truck swerved left to avoid that car. Swerved right to not go in the ditch. Swerved left again so not to go into the other ditch and spun around.
And did the car, that? Big reaction?
They left.
Wow.
All right.
But we did get the license plate number. We've given it to the.
Okay, all right. Okay, so the, the, the first thing though is that no one was injured. That's the most important thing.
Right.
Um, so what's the outlook on, has there been an assessment of the damage to the, to the engine?
Um, yes, a lot. It's probably not.
Not fixable, yeah.
That's, that's what Mickey Big, Michael Big is saying right now.
Yeah.
Um, there, the, the agreed upon insurance value was $600,000. So the damage needs to get somewhere around four fifty, four seventy-five to be an economic loss for us to get the, the, the $600,000. Um, it's probably not reasonable to put a lot of money into repairing that engine. As good a condition that was in, it's still 35 years old.
Yeah.
It still doesn't have airbags. It still doesn't have rollover protection. Still doesn't have any lock brakes.
It looks like, it looks like there's damage to the frame, am I right?
The frame is certainly bent. Um, it looks like the back axle is twisted. Um, so the, um, insurance adjuster contacted us. They don't have a number yet.
Yeah.
But they'll be working with Michael Big and other folks to, to come up with that.
Okay, was that a truck we were replacing anyway?
It is one of the ones I was replacing. The, the updated date for that is December of 2026, but we can't go two and a half years.
No.
Without a reserve engine.
Right, so I thought the first one up was the, was it the engine or the ladder truck? What is it?
The, the, the engine and tanker.
Engine tanker.
We're ordering in the process.
We got it, right.
We ordered a new pump and tanker.
Right.
Um, so the, the ladder is next in line. That's what we're looking into.
Okay.
Is there a chance of ex, expediting that or no chance?
No, um, the system chief contacted Pearson, they said, no.
Yeah, yeah, no, okay, good.
We did ask.
Yeah, okay, yeah, sure.
Free to ask.
Should ask, right, yeah.
So, so due to that, Charlie, what, what did you do with the, with the town? So they obviously know about it, so how?
Right now, the town, uh, not the town, but Canterbury Fire District is already, they're on automatic response to structured fires in the village with an engine.
Okay.
Got it. So that, we'll know that we have two engines coming. They're not coming to automatic alarms or, or stuff like that, just.
Okay.
Yes, structured.
Reported fires.
Okay.
Okay, good, so as long as the public knows, residents know that it's gonna be automatically covered. Um, we're, we're good to go, okay. All right, well, um, you know, keep us, keep us apprised of, um, what the insurance value is gonna be, I mean, if we're gonna get to that point. I mean, look, it's, we'll end up putting it towards the new, new vehicle, so.
Putting it towards a new vehicle, but we do have to figure out what to do in two and a half years.
Yeah.
I think whether renting an engine for two years or purchasing something that we would sell at the end of the two years.
I didn't even think about that. They actually, you, you could rent, you could rent it out.
Maybe lease.
Hmm. So you guys obviously looking into that?
Yes.
All right.
We need to have something. We need to have a second piece, so we're trying to figure out what, how we're gonna do that, that works.
Yeah, so if you come back with a proposal on that, the lease, and what was the other one you said? Oh, you, the other option was purchasing, basically a short, uh, purchase for a short time with a, with a sale on the basket.
Yeah, as, as a, for instance, and I'm not suggesting we go this way right now. Um, we found a Pierce, very much like the, the one that was in the accident, two years younger, for $35,000.
Wow.
Um.
Hmm, probably be worth it to do it.
It might be, but it, it makes me uncomfortable buying a vehicle that's not, um.
And we might not get.
BA compliant.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Yeah.
It still doesn't have airbags. It still doesn't have rollover protection.
Yeah. What, how many years newer, Charlie, would we have to, to go up to get into compliance with most of that stuff? Like what, where, where did that start?
Well, they have to be younger than 25 years to be compliant in the first place.
Yeah.
At least 10 years.
No, I'm just wondering. Because I know all the trucks, all stuff came in in trucks in different stages, you know?
Oh, who leased, who rents out fire trucks to other municipality? I assume it's municipality with a.
Well, we might be able to find another municipality that has, um, an extra engine. Um, one of the manufacturers might have a demo motto, mo, mo, model that we could either purchase or lease.
All right, all right, didn't realize that. That's very good. Okay, all right, keep us apprised. One last question is, has the, the boat been out? Meaning has that had to respond? I think I saw one time, that's right, I was down there when, what happened with that one?
Actually, three times in one day.
On one, on the, on the same call?
On the same call. Um, a person, I believe from the other side of the river, reported seeing an 18-foot vessel that was overturned. Um, we went out, we searched, we, and other departments went out and searched, didn't find it, find it. Um, then there, I'm sorry, it wasn't the same call. Then there was a kayaker off of Plum Point. Um, it's actually Balesgate call, but we got called mutually. That person made it to shore. And then the state police found our 18-foot vessel. But it was a two-seat pedal boat.
Uh.
Oh, wow.
That was.
The wife wasn't on the shore, was she?
Floating.
It was, it was just floating upside down, probably for a couple of years.
This was only one day?
Only one day.
I remember that was like two Saturdays ago or something, like three, three weeks ago?
With a plug in her hand, Bill.
All right, okay. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for that. Okay, moving on to the police department report. Chief, any, anything to point out?
Um, just that I had the guys out for some trainings. Um, so it was Ruger and also Maria went to, uh, dose gun, uh, training, which is a, been a big issue in the last couple of years. And I also had also Randy Thompson from motorcycle enforcement training. Um, that kinda goes over everything is, is a, a whole book on different things that we can enforce just on the motorcycle itself.
Hmm.
Um, whether it be equipment or violations.
People be happy about that.
We just actually just, um, sent a check out to get the four AED units that we got as a result of the grant. So we should have them probably by the end of this week, beginning next week, put them into service.
Very good. Right, you guys have any questions? No, I don't. Okay, thanks, chief. Moving on, um. Oh, that's right, that is.
Did interview the candidate.
Yes, oh, just to, um.
General public.
Yeah, just for the general public's knowledge, the board, um, has interviewed a candidate, uh, for a full-time position in the police department. Um, the mayor interviewed him previously, um, knowing that he couldn't make it tonight. Um, the three of us interviewed him, it, it went well. And, um, once we regroup with the, uh, the mayor, we'll, we'll let you know, but it was a good interview. Um, and that person, the, will be filling the line, uh, the sea line, right?
Sea line.
The sea line, okay, okay. And chief, did we want to bring up, or in, with respect to, um, the nomination for, um, Officer Thompson? Do we want to speak to it tonight or?
Um, we'll just put that on the agenda for, uh, for business meeting.
Okay, yeah, okay, very good. Yeah, I'm assuming that you might wanna be there.
I'm sorry?
I said I'm assuming he's probably wanted.
Yeah, well, all in all.
Okay, confirm the, uh.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, okay, very good. Okay, public works. Dave, anything of note?
On the report, not, not a whole lot, other than sidewalks are going in out here now.
Yeah, see that.
As you see, uh, the hot box was delivered and we've, uh, got that going a little bit.
Has the town started using it yet?
No, 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 no.
All right.
Uh.
State won't use it.
Side note though, we also, our long-awaited mechanic service vehicle was delivered about a week ago.
Mechanic service vehicle, okay.
Yeah, it's almost two years we waited for this.
Wow.
So that was delivered last week. I hope to have it in service, uh, relatively soon.
Yeah, you'd have to mark that up, right?
It's pretty well set.
Oh, good.
I've got some minor stuff to do, get it lettering and.
Yeah. Oh, good.
Whatnot. And I also received a phone call last week that the front-end loader that we put, we ordered in January.
Hmm.
Is going to be delivered probably the end of this week.
Wow. So that's, that's.
That's way.
Unusual story.
Heavy equipment.
That's gonna be in pretty quick.
Okay.
And also, we're gonna be milling Maple Road tomorrow. And paving it the following week. Uh, we started on this one first because this, this one was one of the roads that was recently paved. And through cooperation with Central Hudson, uh, the village is basically on the hook for, uh, trucking of the materials.
That is excellent. That's a huge, that's huge.
Eighty-five thousand dollars to, uh, mill and pave that part of Maple Road.
Right.
And Central Hudson has already sent us to check.
Excellent. Thanks for working on that, Dave. That worked out well.
Um, in the process still with Central Hudson, I have an agreement in principle with them for, uh,
mountain.
Compensation for Mountain Road, Deer Hill Road.
What's the plan for Mountain Road, Dave? Would it be mill?
I, I have a, I have a couple of different things I'd like to sit with the board and discuss because there's, there's a couple of different ways to do it.
All right.
We're looking probably somewhere in the area, Deer Hill, Deer Hill and Mountain Road are both the two that are in the worst shape. You're probably looking somewhere in the neighborhood of $400, $450,000 to do it the way I wanna do it.
Hmm, yeah.
As, as, as opposed to new construction of two to three million.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Got it.
So, but, uh, right now, right now, I have about 50% of the funding from Central Hudson.
Okay, and this, this would be curb to curb? I know that's not really curving.
Yes.
Okay. All right, um, and hey, the, uh, the boat docks look great, so thanks to, thanks to you guys, um, looks really, really good.
They, they came out.
Yeah.
Everything's in the water so far.
All right.
No issues. And the, the good, the pavilion.
Picnic tables.
The gutters are all done, the picnic tables are there, and the electrician has started.
Oh, good.
Just, uh, doing some preliminary work, no wire, anything pulled yet, but we've got the stuff on order. We're doing some low voltage lighting inside it.
Yeah, we need.
Very good. Okay. All right, moving on to the water department. Mike, anything you know?
Um, I'll just note that the FEMA work that was being done at Black Rock, the new, uh, isolation valve and 16-inch water main that's been completed. Um, we were able to take out a service in old 1895 section of water main and now it's 1930s era now we've upgraded.
Wow, outstanding. We're moving right along.
We are, we are. Um, chief operator bride and water maintenance worker, Dimitro, they, they attended some continuing ed training last month. We took delivery of our new, two new mini excavators and our, uh, Bobcat UTV. Um, the new distribution crane truck is supposed to be delivered in June, but we'll see. Um, and then, uh, the, the county is beginning their, their Main Street replacement project on Main Street.
Yeah.
Part of that is going to be relocating our 1895 10-inch water main.
Water main, yeah.
Taking it out of the creek, putting it on the, uh, the bridge. The contractor expressed some concern about demoing the bridge in close proximity to the existing water main. So we're working with the, the engineer on the project, the county, the contractor to develop a plan for a temporary water main, one block over that would provide border to Main Street area so we can shut that down if need be.
Okay. When, when are they starting that?
Is that shallow enough?
Mike?
Yeah, you can see it in the creek. Um, they started preliminary work today, putting up, uh, dentistry and detours.
Got it.
I believe they're gonna, they're shooting for, um, demolition starting next week.
And how, how long do you know the, how long will the project take?
Two construction seasons, so in the fall of next year.
Wow, not two years, but two construction seasons.
Yeah, they, they have, they have a limited window opportunity to be working in the stream. I think it's from April 1st to September 30th or something like that.
Gotcha.
The plan is to always maintain two lanes though.
Yeah.
Right, Mike?
Yeah.
Now, Mike, so, uh, just not to go overboard here, but so what if there was a catastrophic failure of the water main that's in the creek? Can we get it, we can get around that with the plan that you're gonna put in place?
Yeah, that, that's the plan, yes. Because if, if we lose that water main, then the entire Main Street business district goes without water.
Okay.
The side streets off of Main Street, Clinton Street's all without water down to, uh, the library.
Wow.
So that area is not looped, so what we'll do.
That's what I was wondering.
We'll put a temporary loop in the system on Union Street.
Right.
Which is probably a long-term capital improvement the village should look at doing.
But that'll be above ground, plastic?
Yeah, yeah, we're not sure what the material's gonna consist of. Um, believe it or not, in a pinch, you could use four-inch fire hose.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Um, and the last thing, I, I'll be going out of town with Dan and I and Rich Smith next week. Um, and the last thing I I'll be going out of town with Dan Nye and Rich Smith next week, go up to the training up at the Turning Stone. Um, so I won't be at the meeting next week.
And that's when they're you're getting an award. Excellent, okay. Very good. Okay, moving on to EMS, um obviously, there's no one here to ask any question, to answer any questions, but um everything's one hundred percent of the calls were covered.
What is a pet oxygen mask?
I know, just looking at that. Think it's for smoking.
What is a pet oxygen mask?
Exactly what it says. No, it it's for Yeah, they 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 specifically got equipment.
I thought.
It's for uh
Stood for something.
No, and for dogs and other pets. Might get stuck in a fire.
Right, so smoking.
Wow, right. Well, people like their animals, Bill.
Calling for veterans. Right. It's in a rescue situation when there's an
Yeah, right, alright.
Alright, moving on to other business. First up, security camera at Duney Memorial Park. So I think we've had a minor discussion about this. Um, I think what it comes down to is the possible, we just wanted to discuss the possible placement of security camera down near the pavilion. Um.
We have a, we have a drop pole there now, so.
Right.
That.
So it would really be for the pavilion and the
You didn't have it, you would have to get it.
Pavilion and the the uh toilet toilets, and then if all goes well and we have the kayak racks come in.
Would be in sight.
It would be, it would be in sight, which would, which would be pretty, pretty good, very advantageous. I don't know. Now, Jim and I were talking about it, I don't know if, I don't think we necessarily need one over at um the other side. The shelter, yeah. Um, I don't, it doesn't seem like we get a lot of damage over there or graffiti and stuff.
Not now.
And then, I don't think, right, okay. And then up at the at the Duney U Farm, I think Jim might have mentioned that, but I don't think anything. I think it's necessary yet for there unless you guys have any.
I I don't, uh, I I haven't heard that call.
It's low in the committee, um.
I mean, you got the community guard, you got, I mean, but that's not.
Yeah. Really, I guess the question is practically, alright, the easy, the easy part is putting it in. The question is, is who's gonna be mo-
Yeah, who's gonna be monitoring this?
Where's the screen that that shows up on? I know we have some for this facility, right, and we have.
We have cameras at the the uh village law and stuff, obviously, there. Um, that day in twenty-four hours.
Right.
We can go back.
That's what you want. If not, you're gonna get beat up. What what worries me the most is, well, I mean, so the the port, the uh the toilets are getting locked now, dusts are doing, right? Who does that?
Seven, eight, seven.
Oh, you guys do it, just like the town. The towns do too, so.
So it's not gonna be lo- we're not gonna be monitoring it live essentially.
Right. But that's okay, because you just wanna be able to have some footage, especially if you're gonna have I don't know how many kayak the rack is gonna contain, but I mean, even the stuff that's down there now is pretty valuable when you think about it, you know?
Yeah.
Mo- most of our water facilities have cameras and we don't monitor them live. You can.
Yes.
You know, if you wanna pull it up by your on the cloud, but it records it.
What's the retention period, Mike?
I think it's like thirty-one days or something. You know, I I had a resident call me um on a Sunday about somebody that was out at our well field and we were able to pull it up and whatnot.
Okay. Was it crime in progress?
They're having a catch for the football.
Yeah, yeah, that.
In general, I have a concern about starting to put up cameras in our project space just as a matter of
I worry about the pavilion though, because.
I guess I'm kinda um.
I mean, you wanna get restitution bill, they beat the schools up terribly. I mean, it's just I mean, Steve doesn't even get most of the calls, but, cause they don't call.
Well, they hate the school.
But it's expensive nuisance, you know, it's expensive nuisance.
I mean, I I guess, I I'm, I could be persuaded either way. I I get your point, Bill. I actually kinda lean towards that. It's almost like, I I kinda wanna see how it, how it goes. Right, if we see, if we see something happen, I I know it's gonna be like, well, we addressed this before and you guys decided against it, but I would like to see how the first season goes with the pavilion and if if we start seeing that things are are um getting destroyed, then then I, then I think we'd have to make a move to do something, but that's my feeling as well. Dave, what's your?
I don't know, I I think, I think, I don't see any reason why we couldn't have a recorded globe down there, just because especially for them to put kayaks down.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think.
Expensive piece of machinery.
Well, look, the the kayak thing, I, that's gonna, that's gonna be a bit, and the other thing with the with the kayaks too is is um, like there people are gonna be writing, are gonna be signing a waiver, a waiver um of any Yeah. So, and they're gonna have, they're gonna have locks on this stuff. I get it, I totally, yeah, no, no, this isn't gonna be, they have to have locks, they're gonna sign an agreement, the the whole thing, so. Um, look, I, we'll, we'll speak to the rest of the board about it.
Yeah, whatever they think. I just don't wanna see something happen and everybody'll say, whoa, what'd you expect?
Yeah, yeah. Alright, um, alright, how about moving on the, our favorite building department fee schedule. Bill, I know you love this topic.
Love this document, love this topic. Well, I don't, I'm not sure what what we're hoping to, uh, what the scope of our discussion is tonight, but I I just I gave some feedback on a meeting that I was unable to attend, uh, just to say that I feel like where we're trying to do a comparison between our our fees and those of neighboring municipalities. It's a lot of apples to oranges, cause in some cases we're applying a formula, in some cases they're doing a flat fee and vice versa in a couple of spots. And um, I I feel as though navigating this as a, as a user, if I were, if I were looking for a fee for something that I was trying to accomplish. I'm not positive that I would be able to do so without some guidance and um you know, and I imagine I'd have guidance depending on what the project was. But anyways, I I don't have a you know, in general, I'm in favor of trying to bring our fees in line with the, you know, more closely aligned with those of the towns specifically.
Just as.
Uh, but other comparable villages as well, and um I I don't have anything specific beyond that.
Um, Manny, with regards to the town, do we know when the last time they updated their fee schedule? Do you have any idea?
Two years ago.
Two years ago. Was it comprehensive in everything, or is it just selected?
They just do it in uh an increase, you know, like
Yeah.
Twenty cents.
What they felt, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, you know, around the clock, that's what everything and that's it.
And their sole document is that one pager, correct?
One pager.
Yeah. Which, you know, might be airing on the side of too little detail, but.
Yeah, and and, you know, full disclosure on this, um, myself, Joe McKay and Manny met about this how long ago? Was it last, over a year ago?
Right, a year ago now, yes.
And we went through this in 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 detail and Manny Manny was comparing it to other municipalities, two of which were Village of Nyack, that was one of them, and Bulldoughville was it Spring, was it Spring Valley?
I think I used one in Nyack and the other one was somewhere in Orange County, I can't remember which one.
Okay. But most of your, most of your fee schedule was coming from the rep, was it the state recommended fee schedule?
International Code Council Recommendation Board for uh national uh square footage.
And that, okay, so it's, uh, alright, so that's, that's US broad, it's not, it's not New York specific.
Not New York is specific, okay.
Um, and Bill, I see that you, you had a bunch of comments in regards to some of the um, for Manny to consider. Did you have an opportunity to take a look at any of this? Okay, alright, um.
I'd love to look at it to remember what I said.
I know, there's.
Few weeks ago and I.
Yeah, you have about at least, what, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine, nine or ten. Um, I know we keep kicking the can down the road on this, but this is, I think I really do think what's gonna have to happen is is it's almost like a redo of of you meeting with, meeting with us and actually spending some time going up, going over it. Um, cause even when, even when Joe McKay and I and I met with you, coming back to the board, it was it was difficult, it was difficult for you guys. We knew it a little bit better, cause we spent, we spent a lot of time with you going over it. Um, and you did give us the the comparison between us and the town, which was, which was helpful. Um, I guess an overall question, and I can't remember Manny, and that's this, compared to compared to the, I guess the other, have you compared to the other municipalities or in Orange County, like Village of Florida or the Village of Montgomery?
I can do a little more research on that, but you're gonna find that everybody got their own criteria.
Yeah.
We can't say, okay, he's a, he's a common denominator that would be, there isn't one. Everything comes down to what do we wanna do?
Yeah.
And I think we should get away from looking at what other people are doing.
Yeah.
And decide on what do we wanna do for this community of our physical concerns.
Yeah.
Then we can establish something that works for us, rather than comparing us to everybody else, but there isn't a common denominator, uh, just the reason.
Yeah, it's almost literally, I think it ends up being, it's almost like going line by line through this.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what it really that, that's, that's what it really is, and it's, and it's, I think it's the full board. If we don't have, you know, like, we, we keep looking at it at, you know, piecemeal.
Yeah.
And I think unless we sit down with you and you tell us, okay, this is the calculation. Now, I think one that'll have, ha- will help um with that background, two, and Bill's pointed it out, and that is in some of your comments here is that some of the calculations aren't based on that code that you were recommending, and there's multipliers. So it's almost makes it a little bit harder for the the a resident to determine what the fee is going to be. To that end, I know the reason for the multiplier is because if if the value changes, it's just in the calculation. I guess the question is, is for some of them, um, you know, maybe people are used to seeing a, you know, a specific fee.
Something for a specific fee is not fair to all.
That, that is, that's true.
Right, if you're building something much larger, if you're building, yeah, if it requires more effort on our behalf, then makes sense to, you know.
That's why, that's why this formula comes into play and put everybody on the same.
Yeah, and there's other, I I think some of the other municipalities also do the cost of construction analysis as part of their formula, right?
Yeah, I don't use the cost of construction, cause that can be vague, I mean, that, they could tell you one number.
It's based on the cost of construction.
It's based on the square footage, the square footage times, the accord, but times the cost of construction per square foot.
Yeah.
Times the multiplier. And that's why the multiplier opens it up to keep everybody at the equal level. Depending on the project that they do and the type of construction that they're doing, cause if you're building a single family house with just you know, sticks and you're building a commercial building with fire rating and all, all these have a uh a maintenance that goes where they, the cost is so much different.
Mm-hmm, and your cost of construction number you're getting from that code.
And based on the type of construction or the building and the and the type of occupancy, so it's a lot of things that you look at to come up with that number. And that's why it's so, so wide open to cover all the areas.
I actually, you know what I think, I actually think this is, I don't think we're gonna get through this in a, in a business meeting. I think it's almost like we have to have a special a special meeting with you. Just for this.
And do kind of some homework and then do a two-hour
Yeah.
Sit down line by line.
Yes, I think that's, I I I think that's the only way to get our, get through this. Agreed, David?
Yeah.
Car right?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, I'll recommend that to Jim. I'll make sure that I'm not gonna be around for that meeting.
Then you don't get to set the fees.
Alright, alright Manny, we will get back to your regards to that.
And I would like to say, thank you for doing all this comparison and work, and a year has gone by and I know it's been a lot of.
Alright, okay, um, review of the town's tree law. Um, on the board, we have a resident expert in regards to the town tree law. Because he was part of that committee that drafted this, right, David?
Yes.
And would you like to
Well.
Give us a flavor of what, just give us a flavor of who, who it applies to and who it does not apply to.
It doesn't apply to a sing- to a, basically to a homeowner. It's more uh for um it wouldn't be for like a single lot, it would be for more than a single lot. Doesn't, so they're not telling you, you, if you if a tree is hazardous or it's hanging over your house, you can cut your tree down without a permit. But you can't cut down twenty trees without a plan to re- possibly replace them or whatever.
So, so on a, on a single lot, single single-family residence, um, I I saw, I read through this and I have to go through it again.
It was much more in-depth. They, they cut it a lot, they trimmed it a lot.
Yeah, it does say specifically that it it's not applicable to
They sent it.
Um, it does not apply to any lot improved with or being developed as a
Okay.
Or developed as a one or two-family residence.
Right.
I I guess, I, what I'm, I read through this, it, there's a couple of questions I had. What I was just trying to make sure of is, is that they started talking about clear cutting.
Yes.
Um, it says except as provided in this section, and this section provides that it's it's not applicable to one or two-family residents.
Right.
But then it goes on to say, um, it's uh prohibited with, you, you can't clear cut trees without a tree removal permit. I just wanna make sure, like, I guess the question is this, is I I have, let me think, I've got, I've got at least eight trees, big trees on my property. So if I end up, you know, taking down three or four, which sooner or later, unfortunately, will have to happen, because they're they're, they're getting to that stage, um, I guess the question is, is um, is that still an exception? Like, when you were just saying that, and this is without really looking at this in depth. Um, if you're a single-family residence or two-family residence and you're taking down a number of trees, like a lot.
Would apply, it could apply to, yes. Any activity within a two-year period which removes significantly disturbs or results in injury to a minimum of eight living trees or more, uh, with more of a diameter or breast D B H of six inches, nineteen inches in circumference, or greater, uh, accepting the products of agriculture operations in any area of size without the benefit of the current valid tree removal.
Yeah, also, but doesn't so jumping in, I haven't actually read it either, and just jumping in, looking at uh where Jim has made marks on his uh, in the applicability section one thirty-eight dash eleven. It says it applies to removal of trees as part of land development, clearing or clear cutting requiring approval from the town planning board. It does not apply to any lot improved with or being developed as a one or two-family residence.
Right.
And then so then E is probably where you except as provided here, the clear cutting um is prohibited without a tree removal permit. Um, but it sounds like, you know, the definitely, you know, A and B kinda
I know, I was
Right, that, right?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I guess, I guess that's what it is. I I, when I looked at section B and section E, I'm like, alright. I kept going back to section B saying, okay, it's not applicable to one or two-family residents. It seems clear, I guess the question is, just to make it even clearer, um, but let me just see. Yeah, there's, look, I guess, I guess it's this, and that is for for Monday, for Monday night. Look, I'll take a, I'll definitely take a closer look at this. Um, I think it's me, to me, it may be just little bit clearer, um, just so.
It was way, a lot more.
You're a lot more detailed.
Oh, God, yes.
Okay.
This is, this is trimmed down quite a bit.
Um.
Who's administering it?
That's the problem.
Well, that's
Well, they have an arborist.
Is there gonna be a tree warden hired or?
Well, they have somebody.
Somebody designated as the tree ward.
Angelo Sembary.
So we would have to, we would have to do, we would have to do the same.
Yes, if if it applied.
Right. Um, let me just see, I'm thinking about the commercial, I know multi-family development, multi-family development. Okay, well, look, I think the best thing at this point to do is take a closer look. Come back, let's come back Monday night. Come back, let's come back Monday night.
Yeah, I mean, I talked to Carla a little bit about it. I don't think there's, there's anything that she. Would like to see cha- you know, that she thinks that we should change from them to us. But we have to decide if we wanna adopt it or not. That's our call. We don't have to.
We can adopt it with, with changes.
That's right.
We felt that.
That's right, if there's something.
If there's a logical law or anything that.
Right.
Cause I would definitely like to understand cases, you know, like what? Does it apply to your trees in your, on your property? Like, is it, yeah.
Right.
What are the benefits to the municipality of adopting a tree law? There are some, right? Doesn't the state give you some, you get points on grants or something like that?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that was, yeah. And then just overall develop, you know, to, to oversee develop.
Well, I mean, it's great to have a tree law. I agree with that, but.
They couldn't have submitted the proposal for the, uh, for the golf course if this was in place. Treetop would have to adhere to, uh, adhere to this. Any, any, to be a genie woods, any of them will have to adhere to this wall. Which is not strict for, you know, the homeowner, but it, it could be deemed strict for them.
For developers of large.
Depends on what you have. If you have all garbage or evasives, doesn't matter, you can take them all down.
Right.
You know, it all depends on what's, what's going on there, you know?
All right, so for next Monday, just. Take a closer look, come back.
Yeah, I, I have to, I'll go over with the, I have the other one. I have the original too.
All right. Moving on to garbage and sewer fees and pool credit. And this. Is Dave Howerson's wheelhouse. So. Dave, let me just, I have some notes on this. Hold on, let's see. Okay. Understand from, from Dave, with respect, and Dave, you can, um. Correct me if I'm wrong or add make, add anything to it, but with respect to the garbage fees, apparently. Some residents have been getting, um. Not paying what they're supposed to be paying. In, in certain instances, it's pretty significant. The fee that they're not paying. I think you advise that it's up to about twenty-five residents that it affects.
Right now, we have, I think it's twenty-five or twenty-six. Single-family homes. That have applied at one time or another for a reduced garbage rate. The village started, I, I guess it's a policy, it was a policy, but it was never written, it's not in the code or anything. For the snowbirds, so to speak, that they go to Florida for the, for the winter, they call the village. They ask to have their garbage reduced, it gets reduced by fifty percent. That was what was happening. There's no real policies. But, but. The list that I have has varying degrees of.
Snowbirdiness?
So, and what you're saying is, I'm, I'm presuming here that the reduction remained even though.
The houses changed owners.
Or, or the, the person, the people returned from Florida.
They, they were supposed, when they returned from Florida, they're supposed to be billed back. Lot of, that hasn't happened. What triggered this was somebody who called for a reduction, and then. This is after the, uh, transition from the office up here and. Billing and stuff like that. I'm more into the billing now. And when I looked up and I found out that this person was looking for a twenty or fifty percent reduction, under fifty percent reduction. It triggered me to go into. Pulling everything, and we've gone through with the help of, uh. Stephanie and the, you know, administrative staff down there, we've gone through. All of the accounts and compiled, and we've got a pretty good list of things. It's not just the, uh. Water, or it's not just the garbage reduction for that. There's commercial. Properties that aren't paying.
Full train. What they're.
What, what they actually should be. There's, so I went through the county website, I brought, pulled up every parcel, looked at every. How many apartments, how many businesses, and I went through everything and. I did a spreadsheet, I have it all put together. We need to make adjustments.
Okay, so your spreadsheet includes how we calculate the, how the garbage fees are calculated?
Yes.
Okay. You're almost done putting that together?
I ha- I have the. All of this, this stuff, yes.
Okay.
It's something we need to sit. Around a table.
Yes, okay. So why don't, um, well, when you're, you're completed, why don't you send it out to, send it to Jim? Um, you could send it out to the board, or if he wants to take a look at it first, it's. Fine, um, and then. It's not gonna take as long as going over the fees with Manny, but.
No.
Maybe, maybe we'll do a start our. May not be next. But maybe our business session. In June, we'll add an extra half hour, get you started early or something. That way we can. Address that.
And there, there are a few that are paying more than, and there's quite a few that are paying less.
Yeah. But the aperture of this whole thing, you're talking, it's like twenty-five to thirty, you think, total, which isn't.
The single-family homes, we're talking about twenty-five, the, uh.
Commercial.
Commercial properties.
All right, okay. And actually, Dave, in regards to that, the calculation that, your calculation, you're coming up for the fees, it, has that? Um, has that been updated? Meaning, is that what other municipalities use? Is that the industry standard or it's, it's?
I get phone calls all the time asking what our fees are, and I share them with.
Other municipalities.
Yes, because the garbage fees and, uh, you know.
And tipping fees are. We're not going.
Yes.
So, that's when we had to raise the rates this, this year because we were falling behind.
Right, cause it's, it just begs the question. Is? How do we come up with the fee and is the fee, is the calculation justifiable? So.
Yes, I mean, the, the fees that we have are legit. They're not.
Yeah.
Out of the realm with everybody else.
Okay. Okay, so why don't you, why don't you send that out to the board, and then we'll have to, we'll tee it up. If Jim decides we wanna talk about it next Monday. We, we can before, or otherwise, from, from my perspective. Um, we'll talk about it at the next business session. We're just gonna put some time in on this.
And while we're on that, we also gotta go to the pool credit.
Right, that's the next thing up.
Which, the pool credit actually affects the sewer, not.
Right.
Right.
So people call, they wanna fill the swimming pool. And they don't wanna pay because your sewer is based on your water consumption.
Right.
So. That should be, it should be coming through my office.
Yeah. Yes.
For the reduction in sewer feed as opposed to the water department.
Be. Now with all these new metering systems that, that we have in place. It's easy to tell.
Yeah, you tell us today you're gonna fill it, and we used to take a reading and bring it here.
The, the trouble is, there's no consistent format in which people are, were using, that the staff down below is using to. When people call up, they just say, hey, I'm back in Florida, take me off the list.
Yeah.
So, like, we had a woman the other day who, who called up, said, I'm back in Florida, take me, you know. I haven't got my credit, but when we looked back, she'd gotten it for a year and a half, when it was only supposed to be six months.
So let me, let me ask you this. Any idea of how many pools we actually? How many people ask for this reduction annually?
For filling the pool. Better idea.
Ballpark ours.
Ten, twelve.
Okay.
I, I, I would make the argument that you not give it at all.
That I'm, that is my, my intuition is that, is because as we discussed this morning, and that is. You can have, someone has the irrigate, irrigation system, it's not going into the sewer system. Yes, so, and there's probably a lot more people have irrigation system than they do pools, so is it fair to them?
And you're already discounting the, the sewer.
By a substantial amount.
Fifteen percent, so you're only getting charged eighty-five percent of your water consumption. Which in the, in the, in the winter time, when all of your consumption is basically going down the sewer. You're only getting hit for eighty-five percent of it.
I, I don't, and I know we had the, we discussed it a little bit, and that is, you know, whether or not this needs to be part of the code. I, I. I don't think, I don't think, I don't think we have to be code, no. I, I think this is just, it's a policy, you're talking very, very, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I, I, I don't, we, we can't, we don't need to waste our time or the money on, on putting in the code.
And the, just the, uh, rate that applies to sewage is far below the, for example, the water rate. So you're getting discounted fifteen percent on your consumption at a rate that is set specifically for sewer.
Yeah, and at one time it was one hundred and fifteen percent, so it was over your water rate.
Because the rate was lower, so it was sort of like.
I don't know. I think there was no rhyme or rhythm to it in the past, cause we couldn't control. We couldn't estimate our water consumption.
As accurate.
As accurately we can now.
Sounds like there's room to make it. Fair. And absorb.
Yeah.
That kind of issue where some people.
What, though what you're feeling in regards, in regards to pool, filling the pools?
No, same. I, I think, I think making a sort of a blanket thing, and maybe we adjust it slightly so it. Kind of, that the sewer rate. Or the dis- or the reduction in volume estimate. So maybe we say, oh, everybody is, it's sixteen percent less than the water consumption. Village-wide. You know what I mean? There's, there's room to play with those two numbers, the, the discount off of the volume that you're being assessed for. And the sewer treatment rate. As well, if we wanna be telling the, what are the ten or twelve people who fill their pools, plus. The people already sort of getting away with it with their irrigation systems. You know, it's, I don't know, and then the, I mean, I would almost apply the same idea to the. To the garbage reduction for people who go to Florida. It's. You know, maybe we equalize it across the, the whole thing so that people.
I don't know. I, I, I think that, I don't know, my, my gut is the blanket. No reduction, no reduction for the pools. Um, because. Then we could say, you're not getting a reduction for those in the irrigation systems.
Right.
Let's, um, Dave, any, any feelings?
Yeah.
Do you have a pool?
No, I already got my reduction when I got it. Charlie does.
I had a leak. For a long time, we just found.
Since Dave brought me up, I prefer you charging me the pool rate, encourage people to conserve water instead. Squandering.
Go.
There you go.
Yeah, we, we recently had a gentleman come in, and he was looking for, uh, his pool reduction from last July. And, and it was. It was animated, you know, because here we are, six months later, he's looking for his reduction, he had been sent to collections. You know, and he, he worried about my reduction. And, and it was, he gave us the dates, we were able to look it up on the computer. We gave him his reduction, but it wasn't for the amount he wanted.
Okay. All right, um, okay, so it sounds like. We'll talk to the rest of the board about this, but it sounds like we're all, at least the three of us, maybe on the. Same plane, so to.
Do you have any idea, just for grins? Cause I used to always battle back and forth between hiring a truck or filling it out of the holes, right?
Cheaper for us to fill.
How much is, do they get for water from a truck?
Six hundred dollars for a truckload. I just had a guy who did one. He said it was like four thousand gallons, he paid six hundred dollars.
That's Morgan.
So, I mean, initially, when you, when you get your new liner, you have to get a truckload to set it.
Yes.
And then you can fill it off, you're, you're better off. My, my last one was eight thousand, it cost me five.
What was it?
But that was, that was about, that was about six or seven years ago.
What if you use your mother's hose too? I used to use them both.
That's good, you earn your mother.
Oh, I know that. All right.
I never told him.
Moving on, moving on.
There's a lot you didn't tell her.
I know.
Sewer, sewer manhole repairs. Dave, this is regards to, um, Homeland, right?
Yeah, area and Homeland.
The benches?
Yeah, it's. It's. It's on the radar to get done. There's been some, uh. Slowdown, I guess would be the word, but, uh.
Yeah, so when.
Hard to have.
There's no issue, there's no. Monitoring, everything is fine over there, there's no problems.
No backup.
It's just a matter of. Getting everything lined up. The contractor that we awarded the bid to got tied up doing another job.
Is it tan? Oh, okay.
Okay, that's right. So you said he's tied up on another job in Val's Gate.
Yeah, they should be, I think they're just about done with that.
Okay, so probably in, get started in the next thirty days.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start pushing them a little bit harder, cause I've got some other stuff we need them to do as well.
All right, so hopefully sometime in. Or maybe, uh, sometime in June.
Sometime this spring, summer, I should say.
Okay, this summer, okay. All right, how long, how long will that project take, Dave, about?
I, I would, two days, actually, so.
Oh, okay.
Only a few days, it's not a.
Okay, is it pouring concrete footings kind of thing, or like, what do they have to do to actually?
You're, you're gonna be pumping, pumping around a manhole probably to avoid.
But the benching itself is putting a structure in place.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be forming con- a concrete trough inside of a manhole.
Okay, how, how many, how many manholes are we talking about totally?
There's only three of them over there, it has to be done.
Oh, all right.
So it's not. Keeping up with it.
Okay.
It's just, it's something that we're not, we don't have the equipment to do.
Nah, yeah, okay.
Cause.
Does it require tank entry?
There can find space.
Yeah, you can't.
Right.
We don't want to.
Yeah, got it, got it, okay. All right, um. Jim left us with, with, the next item up is employee evaluations. So. Uh, he left us with. Proposal. Uh, and I think Doris, uh, helped out in coming up with this, a potential. Um, proposal for doing an evaluation of the non-union employees. It seems, it's only two pages, but it's got a lot of, it's got a lot of questions on it.
For each one, right?
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yep, and then. Right, and, um, as Jim has pointed out. Um, the, the, Dave. Oh, that's why you should have turned up the heat, you should have turned, turned the air conditioner off. I forgot, completely forgot about that. I'm quite comfortable. In, in any case, it's for non-union employees, um. We, we need to get on top of that. Um, because in the past, um, the non-union employees really weren't getting a, an evaluation. They get a written evaluation, then no evaluation. Thanks to Doris, we at least, we have a start. Um, take a look at it. I think at least, at this point, it looks pretty good to me. If you. Doris, may I ask you, have you? Looked at other municipalities? Not that we're always comparing ourselves to other municipalities, but. Um. You've, you've seen some other municipalities and.
I haven't done municipalities, I've just done other te- uh, review templates.
Yes.
Not necessarily.
Okay. Got it, okay. Yeah, I, I don't think it has to, it doesn't necessarily have to be a municipality, so. All right.
If I can make one comment.
Yes.
Whatever it is, it should be that the review should be related to the job description. The job duties, so it can't necessarily be a generic.
Yeah, these are, this draft is, is, um. Specifics from the job dis- job duties.
Yeah.
Listed out here. With a score, proposed scoring mechanism against it.
Yeah, the only thing I, I see is that there, wait, that last page. Yeah, it's really more of a. You're also, to me, the first, first brush at. Uh, at this is that there should be a comment section, like, you know, just a general where you can insert, um. And your, your overall, your overall thoughts on the employees, um.
Yeah, is there a section for response?
This other sample sheet takes more of a, a look at the overall performance metrics, works to full potential, independent work takes initiative. This is very much focused on job duties. Um, to my point. And I, I see the rating scale here is one needs work, two meets goal, and three meets goal. And I don't know if that's meant to be exceed, or if it's sort of a, you know, they both meet, and three is sort of meeting it at a higher level, or if it's meant to be exceeds. It also, it seems very fine-grained to me to score against every one of these duties. Who, um, and actually, you know, I guess, for the samples that we have, it's the village clerk, the deputy treasurer, and the deputy clerk. Uh, but there's two more non-union, right, or maybe three.
Correct, I don't have their job description. I got this from their job description.
Yeah, so we're, yeah, we're definitely gonna have to refine it, cause obviously some of the stuff is not, is not applicable to the individual.
And then is it, is it the mayor who's completing all these, or is it the clerk and then? And then is it, is it the mayor who is completing all these, or is it the clerk and then the deputies get whoever you work?
Alright, so maybe what, what we can do is, thank you Doris for providing this to us, um, as start here, maybe if, um. We'll do a little research and do what else is out there and maybe refining this over the next month or so. Um, and then we can come back and try to, try to finalize it, but it's definitely starting, we definitely need to get it done. Okay, and revise special events application, oh.
You got it, right?
Yeah, let me see, now Doris was very good, I had. Well, we, I was in there at the last meeting. Yeah, so I made a bunch of suggestions la- uh, before I was in at the last meeting. And it looks like, Doris, you pretty much incorporated all, all of it.
And then, um, Joe McKay did a few edits after your edits. And then this would be, to, this would be your edits and Joe McKay's edits up for approval at the next board meeting.
Oh, no, cuz I'm delinquent in giving my feedback to it, which was. I would like, if possible, to maybe apply some design to it so that it doesn't read to the applicant like a. Contract for something as simple as, I wanna have a family picnic at the shelter. Uh, and bring ten cars, and I recognize that we do have to, you know, there are, there's liability concerns and so on. But I would imagine those things could be accomplished with a checkbook in a sort of more densely packed. Front and backside thing where you're putting your name, what your request is and things like that. I think you had had a sample from another, uh, and not, again, to Jim's point, not to continually harp on other municipalities, but I saw an example that that. Looked a little closer to the kind of like, here's a form, fill it out, check the boxes, sign the bottom, and this, this came off as more of a. This is in addition to the uh, form we have as well, right?
This is just for Donahues, isn't it?
No, this would be, this would be, isn't there a third, all special events, yeah. I think would, I I know what you're saying, though, I, the other municipalities.
Did we set a number on special events? Did we set a number?
I'm not sure.
Well, if you wanna go down there and have cake and coffee for your, have a birthday party down there for five people, you can do that. You don't need to permit to do that.
So I, I, I think.
Cuz people talk to me, what do you mean, you you we can't have coffee down here, yeah, you can, you do whatever you want down there.
I think it's, in my mind, it's like.
Reserving space.
Reserving space for, and I can't, I I don't know what number, twelve, it could be twelve, fifteen, twenty, I mean. Two of the, the tables fit, how many people, Dave, comfortably, it's six or eight?
Probably six at max.
Yeah, six.
So you're, you know, more than twelve.
But we don't reserve picnic tables, individual picnic tables.
You know, you're undercover. That's all.
Yeah, no, I, well, right, I I think this. This is meant to apply to special events that reserve space at any of our reserve spaces. So if it's, somebody saying, I want exclusive use of the pavilion for X number of hours, or whatever it is, or the shelter, or. Uh, what are the other, you know, yeah, the farms, and once we get that up and running.
I thought I had what's. Wasn't there an attachment to this, um, Doris, cuz I remember I had, you had to fill in, wait, hours, okay, you have the hours. Okay, you're you're telling them what property you wanna rent out, secure your. Your hours, I know what you're saying, Bill, you, we can make it, some of the other municipalities did have it more on a. One, two, three, four, five, six, just a one, you know, more, like a two liner.
Disclaimer, kinda.
A two liner and you checked it, you put in the times, I mean, I can try to rework it and make it look, make it look like that.
Well, I can take the text and do some stuff. Not change the language, if you wish.
If you wanna re, you know, if you wanna reformat it that way and make it, I get what you're saying, cuz you start reading this here and it's like. Right, so, yeah, if you wanna take a stab at it, make it more friendly, uh, user-friendly. In regards to filling it out, that would, that would help, I I think what we do have to do, though, is, is determine, okay, well, what. How many people?
Constitute a special event. I think it's just the exclusive use.
Two people, if you want to be sure that you have it for yourself, you could reserve it for one or two people.
Right.
Yeah.
And then check the box for one, or write in one parking space, or two parking spaces. If you wanna guarantee parking spaces versus.
Right, I guess I was just thinking of the people who just, you show up in a bunch of carloads, but it can happen anyway.
Right, but again, if the pavilion, for instance, is booked. And people show up and they start putting their stuff out there and then the people who booked it show up, well, they have to leave. I guess the, the issue that would arise is if somebody far out in advance reserves the pavilion for an event for three people. And then somebody else shows up, you know, puts in an application, says, I'd like to have thirty people there for a party, it seems a little unjust to. Turn away thirty to accommodate.
I thought that the split hours bill would be. At least ask, are you here eight to twelve, are you here, I know it can be a pain. And I know there's gonna be good, some garbage issues, maybe we have to have some verbiage in there. So what do you do with your garbage?
There's, there's cans down there, but.
I had like, be responsible for cleaning up.
I can look for the one that you sent, I sent the one that you sent to Joe.
You have a separate set of rules for each location, cuz you're gonna have like, people are gonna be filling that out to use the parking lot here for car washes. You know, and rather than having all that as part of your application, hey.
You must follow the rules for.
Well, you could have that, yeah, you could have that on a.
Have a generic application for whatever facility, and then you have an addendum for each facility for individual rules.
Gotcha, sounds good to me.
It's getting more complicated.
Well, we already have rules for the different places, right? There's the, Donnie Park has rules, and Donnie Farm even has some stuff posted already.
For every action.
I emailed it to you, right, alright, I'll just look at my email, and that was like about two weeks ago, right? Alright, then I'll take a look, if I, if I see it was different, Bill, then I'll send it, I'll send it to you, I, for some reason, I. I have a feeling I sent you the wrong draft. Yeah, let's blame it on him, he's not here.
The mayor's not here either, I think it was his fault.
Um, okay, moving on to the last few things and we can end, cuz I know there are a few people here that wanna watch a hockey game. Dave?
No score.
Okay. Okay, for uh, information, let's see, on May fourteenth, six P M, the fire commission meeting in the village boardroom. That's tomorrow, correct, and then May twentieth, seven P M, our village board meeting. The twenty-seventh, the village office is closed, and then on June second, Riverfest. What is, what, what are the chances it's gonna rain?
Raining this year.
And then June fourteenth is the dinner and and movie Hamilton. Alright.
Fourth of July fundraiser.
And the other, the other alibi is, we have two things, one is, the Board of Ed. Um, election is May twenty-first. And since we're not gonna meet before then, Memorial Day, we have the Memorial Day Parade.
Right.
Um, and I think this week, I should have known this on top of my head, but I don't, we can announce it next.
No, we do meet, we meet on the twentieth, you meet on the twentieth.
Instead of the twenty-seventh, which would have been the normal night.
Yes, yes, I'm just thinking about something else the American Legion has, and that is, we, we do, we post the flags at, on the, um. On the graves for veterans, and we have mo- a lot of organizations volunteer, the Brownies, the Boy Scouts, and the Cub Scouts and so forth. I knew we were not doing it on Memorial Day weekend, which is not this weekend coming up, it's the following weekend, right?
That's right.
Okay, any alibis, alibis?
First concert, bandstand is the twenty-eighth, and the bandstand is almost completed, just needs paint.
Oh, wow, good job.
Okay.
Is molding due to that most of it?
Doug's welding did the crown molding around the outside and Frank Stevens roofing. Realign the hinky gutter.
Like, any alibis, Doris, anything, Chief, Manny, can I just talk to you for two minutes afterwards, okay, uh, Bill, anything?
It's the mayor asked that I could give a quick rundown on Donnie Farm, just, uh. The new section of the gar- gardens opened, so it's a hundred and sixteen plots, they have a hundred plus plots applied for from sixty-eight gardeners. Uh, the, there's a.
Also, you can get a double plot, Bill?
Yeah, apparently so, yeah, you can get, I I I think it caps at two.
Sixteen plots left?
Uh, says there's a hundred plus le- take it, a hundred plus, applied for from sixty-eight different gardeners. That's probably a little bit left to.
Jim said ninety-six percent.
And that's after the expansion.
Yeah, they doubled the size, cuz there was a lot of demand, um, there's a temporary water situation set up. Where there's a solar powered pump that'll cap off and fill the troughs so people can dunk their water cans in. Visited with them to talk about plans for potable water supply in the future, and, uh.
They have an irrigation system in there?
The well is good enough to give water to them, not drinking water.
And it fills in, it's sort of a trickle and it, it kind of the pump, you know. Drops it into the troughs that are in the garden, and so they have a little, a little thin lead, I don't know what it is, probably, I don't know what size diameter it is, but it's very.
Alright. We're leaving off on a good note, okay, thank you, everyone.
Then you have to regulate as a public work.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
On their, hi, thank you, thank you, everyone, appreciate.